Thank you, acknowledged, but that is why I'm asking to waive the procedural bylaw for this meeting.
Mr. Councillor Campbell, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mayor McCaskey, through you, to Mr. Kirby. Thank you for reading that. You made a point of emphasizing the part that says with an external municipal law lawyer present. As you're using that as the reason for, I will call your objection to this, that's how I would frame that. How many municipal lawyers did you reach out to to ask their availability to attend this meeting? So that we could post questions.
Mr. Kirby.
Through your worship, any conversations I've had with lawyers to establish a retainer with, if any, I'd be happy to discuss in closed session.
I have another question, if I may, please.
Thank you.
Normally, this is a procedural question. Normally, our meetings are live streamed. We have the equipment here. I understand that this one is not being live streamed, but I've had an awful lot of people reach out to me and they're very upset and you can understand how that looks to folks. So I just want an explanation as to why this is not being live streamed. Please, Mr. Kirby.
Through your worship, this was called on Friday, the petition was delivered on Friday. For personnel reasons, we only have so many staff available and the staff person who would be able to assist with making the matter live streamed was not available.
So a follow-up to that. So to be clear, we have one member of staff with the knowledge to stream our meetings.
Mr. Kirby.
Through your worship, we have one member of staff and a comprehensive list of instructions about how to set it up. This could have been established had longer timeframes been enabled, but this was done in quite a short turnaround.
Mr. Councillor Law, then, Councillor Paulus.
Thanks, Mayor Campbell. So I just wanted to clarify. Last meeting we were at, we wanted to go into closed session and discuss some matters to deal with this. Actually, we're going to make simply waive motion, or, well, sorry, waive notice of motion. Somebody brought forward a motion and we were like, so I'm assuming that there must be a difference between a regular scheduled meeting and the special meeting.
Through your worship, that is correct. Special meetings are of a unique character. Regular meetings are planned in advance and council members have, and the public are able to set their schedules accordingly. Special meetings are called for a particular purpose and that particular purpose defines what may be discussed upon at the special meeting.
Mr. Paulus.
Thanks, through the chair, and this might require a sidebar, but, Dan, it is Section 22 of Robert's Rules, identifies suspension of rules. And maybe you could go into the-
Through your worship, Section 25.
25, okay, so I guess it's been adjusted, I don't know. It does say when somebody wishes to do something that cannot be done without violating its own rules and yet it is not in conflict with the Constitution or bylaws or with fundamental principles of parliamentary law, it suspends the rules that interfere with proposed action. The other element that I was noting, so right off the bat, is there not a cutout for us as the protectors of our own bylaws to make this possible?
Through your worship, do you articulate that again, please, Councillor, just from my understanding?
Maybe a sidebar, maybe we should take a 10-minute recess here to discuss this.
Councillor Smith, if I could weigh in on that. I believe, and Councillor Paulus, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what Councillor Paulus is asking is you, as our clerk, provide counsel with opinion on matters, which is what you're doing here and it's up to counsel as to whether they accept that opinion or do something that opposes that opinion if we feel that's appropriate given the circumstances.
Mr. Kirby.
Through your worship, with slight variation to what the councillor said, I am asked for an opinion and my opinion is invited. I have no grounds to object or otherwise to anything identified before counsel. When my opinion is invited, I refer to the rules and provide my impartial analysis for counsel's consideration. We're quite correct that the adjudicative authority for, the adjudicative authority isn't the clerk, but it's instead the chair and, if appealed, counsel itself. I think with respect that if there is a contrary interpretation to what's been posed, that it be precisely articulated to provide staff with guidance in the future. For example, I articulated at the outset that we're all, we all probably understand that there are limitations to how this rule operates. I don't think any councillor would object to the idea that even with a majority or even with a supermajority, with two-thirds counsel, no one member can be stopped from asking questions. If there is an intention to deviate from the rules, a principled exception be applied to identify precisely where that limit is of suspending the rules. My reference point, as I understand this, my reading of Robert's Rules, but I prefer otherwise to counsel.
Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor McCaskey, through you. Dan, I apologize upfront for how this question's going to sound, okay? How long have you been a municipal clerk?
Mr. Kirby.
Through the chair, since November.
Thank you, and I, believe me, I mean no disrespect by that question. However, based on your limited experience as a clerk, did you reach out to someone else for opinion on this, just to kind of verify what you're explaining to us?
Through your worship, my reading was based on my interpretation of the rules and the bylaw. If counsel has another basis for deviating from that, whether it's from your own opinion or opinion that you've gathered from another person, I'd be willing to give it.
I think, Mr.-
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Kirby, answer our interpretation and just, and I think we need to be conscious of getting into waiving the rules. If we don't do properly, it could void whatever actions we take. Councillor Spoh, if you have a-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This gets really complicated. Through you, who are clerk, what are the consequences if we go ahead with this meeting? Are there consequences if we vote as counsel, the majority of counsel, to go through this meeting?
Through your worship, it depends. I, again, I have articulated the basis for my opinion based on the rules as they're stated in the procedural bylaw, my interpretation of Robert's Rules. If you're saying if counsel has the opinion or if the chair of counsel has a different opinion, I think it is incumbent upon the adjudicator to identify precisely where this limit to suspending the bylaws ends. My interpretation, based on what I've read, is that it ends at fundamental principles of parliamentary law, protecting absentees, protecting an individual member. That was taken from Robert's Rules of Order. If you have some other basis for articulating the precise limits of the right to suspend, I very much think you're right.
Something quite a question, sir.
Just go ahead, Councillor Spoh.
As Councillor Campbell asked the question, you're a lawyer, are you not?
Through your worship, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Campbell.
Mr. Kirby, through, Mayor McCaskey, Mr. Kirby, could you state those three reasons again, the three limitations? I think there was something to the absentee party, which doesn't apply. What were the other limitations that you cited?
Through your worship, the three limitations are as follows. And with respect, it does apply. This is, it is the protection of absentees, that is the present incident, the present matter that we're talking about. The three exceptions, or there are numbers that apply, but the one, that there are few that are based fundamental principles of parliamentary law, protecting absentees, and basic right of individual member. The idea behind protecting absentees is that with a special meeting, you are calling a meeting for a purpose out that is not held in the regular course of counsel, right? In the regular course of scheduled meetings. Any council member or member of the public may not be present to attend or see that the, that the, that the purpose of the meeting is such that they don't have to attend. It is therefore important to protect the rights of any absentees, whether present or in the future, to ensure, excuse me, that that the purpose of the meeting not be subject to the suspension rule.
Yes.
Thank you. So considering the concern for absentee parties, I would then propose that we proceed with the suspensions of the rules to allow us to put items on the agenda, because again, as it is now, there are no items on the agenda, but that we strike the two discussions that I had proposed for closed session, which might involve absentee parties, and proceed with the two items that I proposed for open session, which do not involve absentee parties.
Mr. Kirby.
Through your worship, with respect, I think absentee parties should be interpreted broadly including members of the public and members of staff. The, yes, all of council is here, but certain members of the public may have seen the purpose of the meeting as it stated and reasonably inferred that what was going to be discussed was going to be in closed session for the purposes of counsel getting legal advice to discuss the matters that were identified.
So you're saying that members of the public who read the notice of intention for the meeting might not have the rights recognized because they weren't aware of the topics that are now being introduced?
Through, or to your worship, and decided not to attend on that basis, yes.
Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor McCaskey. Through you-
Something went wrong.
We have a room full of people here that are looking for answers, as are council. You have not provided those answers. You have said publicly that you're unable to provide those answers publicly due to council confidentiality and yet we as members of council don't have those answers. So that's why we're here. Let's, let's make no mistake about it, let's call it like it is, that's why we're here. While I appreciate your support, please don't do that. So fine, we can call this what it is and say that due to a procedural technicality, we're unable to proceed today. However, we can immediately petition for a special meeting, make sure these people know about it, and in that meeting, we will make sure they have an opportunity to voice their opinions and walk up to that podium and, and do exactly that. Through you, to the clerk, are we within our rights, in your opinion, to do that?
Absolutely.
Through your worship, you are entitled to call a special meeting for any purposes permitted by the act that would include that. I would respectfully request that if there's any intention of involvement of external counsel, you have a conversation, that any member of a conversation with council services first and as well if there's an intention for it to be live streamed, that you make inquiries about staff availability at that time.
Councillor Campbell, as I suggested earlier, I'm quite prepared to call a special meeting to counsel when the attorney's available and I would certainly speak to strong mayor powers at that point, I have no problem doing that.
Thank you, I certainly look forward to that.
Okay. Do we agree to defer this until the attorney's present, is that the- Councillor Kirby.
Thank you.
Yeah, let it fester.
In my own opinion, I would like to proceed with the two motions that I proposed to discuss in open session.
Should let it fester longer.
And that would require the suspension of our procedural bylaw, I would have put them on the agenda and I will leave that to counsel as to whether we have a second.
Councillor Spoh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we're going to call a special meeting next week or whenever, I would hope that we would do it at 7:00 o'clock so that the public can attend and speak to whatever issues that we're going to be discussing and the podium would be open for them to discuss, so, or to comment. So I would hope that we would consider it at 7:00 o'clock.
That's fine. Any other comments here, any other? Councillor Paulus, Councillor Campbell.
Thanks, I'm supportive of seconding. I have just one question to, Dan. There was mention there of the head of the meeting, with the head of council, can determine it within the realm of discussion? Am I understanding that? I think I have the phrasing wrong, but maybe please clarify.
Through your worship, thank you. Perhaps I, I'm going to take a guess or speculate here that where, that what I was, that what you're referring to is that where the procedural bylaw does not provide for something in the meetings where there's any insistancy, the matter shall be decided by the presiding officer in accordance with the current edition of Robert's Rules. Does that sound like what it was you were referring to?
That sounds familiar. And who in this scenario is the presiding officer?
Through your worship, the mayor is the presiding officer and is the chair, yes?
So just to understand, so the mayor could rule it in order, is that the possibility?
The mayor is the, yes, the mayor is the chair and makes, and rules on matters of procedure, yes.
I guess the obvious question is going, is it in order?
Well, I think based on Mr. Kirby's, this isn't a determination at this point, I think we have further discussion to have, but based on Mr. Kirby's understanding, it's out of order. My preference would be to have the meeting when the attorney's here and do that next week and 7:00 o'clock is fine, whatever. I think that information is going to guide us in terms of how we make our decisions and there's a lot of information that we need that the attorney would be able to provide.
They just said, that's a no, just to be fair.
I didn't say no. Through your word, ladies. I did not say no, I said I'm taking other advice when I have more discussion we need to have here now. My suggestion and recommendation would be we wait until the attorney's here, because that was the request that we all had, there's information one from the lawyer. So I try and understand the complexity of this and that may guide us as we go through these discussions. And I'm not sure waiting two days, five days is going to make a big difference.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern is twofold, that if we make decisions today without the outside lawyer consultant that's coming, would that put us in jeopardy of other things or liable for other things? That's one of the motions discusses, the hiring and firing and so on and so on. Would that, would that create liability for the city and the taxpayers of this community if we went ahead and had the meeting today?
I can't, I mean, that's on the- Mr. Kirby, again.
Through you, your worship, would the mayor, please, excuse me, would the common counsel please restate the question?
Thank you. As I said, my fear is that if we have a meeting today when we're discussing some of the open issues that are on the table, without a municipal, external municipal lawyer consultation with us on what we can and can't do on discussions, there's a couple of hiring proposals, budget and anything else that's involved in this, would we have a liability, both to us as councillors and to the public on the taxpayers of our area? So the liability is my real concern here, because we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars and millions of dollars.
Mr. Kirby, through your worship, any prospective thing that a councillor might say that might incur liability should be discussed in closed session. So, no, there is, provided that each and every councillor is mindful of what may be discussed in open session and what may be discussed in closed, there is no additional prospect for liability.
Thank you.
Councillor Shirk, any comments? Go ahead.
Thanks to the mayor. On the agenda, we have a matter that's in open session regarding petition for the special meeting. That is to be received, which in open session, I don't believe we would need a third-party municipal law lawyer present to have that discussion. Can we move the item to be discussed or to be received today and have some discussion on that?
Councillor Leather, any comments? Mr. Wilson, report, Councillor Leather, Mr. Kirby.
It's through your worship. Just, actually, let me retract my hand, thank you.
Okay, pull it out. Councillor Leather, any comments, discussion, thoughts?
My thoughts are that I would prefer that we go ahead today with this.
Okay. Councillor Smith.
I mean, I'm happy to listen to the clerk's advice and I think the public opinion at 7:00 P.M. at a different time when everybody who wants to attend can attend and anybody who wants to watch live stream can watch live stream. I think that makes the most sense. The intention of this meeting was for an external lawyer to be present, so I think, you know, seeking to what we've agreed to this evening, giving people the opportunity to come next week and learn more about this is, in my opinion, best.
Okay. Councillor Shirk.
Thank you, Mayor McCaskey. As stated earlier, I understand why everyone is here. I would like to get those answers too, I would like to get those answers today. However, my concern is that if we waive our procedural bylaw and move forward with this and we come up with action from it with motions that are supported by the majority of people at this table, because of the questions raised, that could be challenged and round and round we go. So based on that alone, I think our best course of action, and I apologize to everyone who made the time to come to this meeting, but in the best interest of actual action coming from this, the best thing we can do is hold another meeting and not waive that procedural bylaw today.
Anything for that, Councillor Law?
Thanks, Mayor Campbell, thank you, along the same lines. It's really unfortunate, I'm finding I'm a fool, that's- It would be great to discuss this, but having listened to the clerk, appreciating his concerns, I would think to undermine what we might accomplish today with technicalities. We got into this in a big hurry and I think we're in a forward week to take our time to properly get out of here.
Is there that, Councillor Paulus, anymore?
I guess just the final question, because it's sounding like the mayor can permit, as the chair of the council, and just a final question, you have the ability to permit the meeting?
I do and I'll answer that after Councillor Spoh's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think for the first or third time this year, Councillor Campbell, I agree with you 100%. But I want to really apologize to the people and thank them for coming out in support of what we're trying to do here. My main goal here is to prevent liability to the taxpayers of this community, because some of the action that we may take here could have a lot of liability to the taxpayer of this community. And I want to make sure that a municipal, external municipal lawyer is here to give us that advice. I've been a councillor for a long time and I strongly, strongly suggest that we listen to an external lawyer to give us those opinions to make it so that we don't have liability to the taxpayers of this community. And I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Okay, I will now rule and I think that my heard from council and the majority indicates that we should wait until the attorney's here, so our rule is out of order. And I certainly will commit to, once the attorney provides a date, within 24 hours, we can schedule a meeting and I'll certainly be prepared to do that, so you won't need a petition. Let's, so that's, Councillor Shirk.
Thank you. Just to note that we are hearing clearly from clerks that 24 hours' notice is not sufficient to allow open public forum or other public feedback and I think it's absolutely critical that any special meeting that includes counsel or outside legal counsel also includes an open public forum. And also, I think that, I know what clerks have said about the limitations for live streaming. So much as, yes, I want to proceed with the meeting as soon as possible, I think that meeting also has to have provision for public feedback.
So the live stream, all right, Councillor, I've heard you're saying proceed, but not necessarily in 24 hours, are we going to get the live stream to support it?
Proceed as soon as possible in a format, in a timeline that allows for open public forum registration and for live streaming of the meeting.
Right on. Councillor Shirk.
Thank you, through the chair, that was my exact comments. You know, I did want to pursue the meeting today, but if they're going to be hosting, I like the meeting to be hosted at a time that's accessible for the most people to come. When people aren't working and are able to attend, I want to be able to be live streamed so people who cannot make it can watch the live stream afterwards or watch it from home if they wish, as well as, again, having an open public forum session so people-
Here's to, and it's hypothetically possible that council may have questions pertaining to something on the agenda, so based-
That's fine.
Whether staff did indeed reach out to lawyers and what those lawyers said. If that's something that council wishes to consider in closed session, that may properly fall within the purpose of the meeting as described on the petition. If there's an interest in doing that, we can move to closed session. If there isn't, the appropriate way would presumably be to adjourn until a special meeting, as it's asked.
Okay. Anyone have any desire for closed session? Okay, then we'll, so you're asserting order, order. So, Mr. Kirby, you're saying that we have a choice of proceeding closed if counsel's desire or we could have a motion to adjourn?
Through your worship, that's correct. Any party, any member of council may move to adjourn. If it's carrying, we can adjourn the meeting. If some councillors may object to its adjournment, wishing to continue with the order of business and that would be their proponent.
But the questions for showing to the agenda would be very important in terms of-
Yes, your worship, again, it would be limited to matters related to council or having, or getting advice concerning the next name or lawyer, that is term lawyer, not meeting.
Councillor Campbell.
Councillor Paulus did have his hand up and was across from the stage.
Sorry, I'm trying. Councillor Paulus.
Through the chair. There we go. Through the chair, my inclination would be to at least have a meeting, even if it's in close, unfortunately.
And through your worship, again, provided that the purpose of the meeting forms the boundaries of the discussion and when enclosed, the closed meeting provisions are adhered to, that would be what would be able to be discussed in closed session.
Councillor, the Councillor Spoh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through you, to our clerk, so once we come out of the closed session meeting, we have to go to public, excuse me, come back out to public and there has to be a motion that what we, what we passed or talk about, you know, she's right, that's supposed to be closed session.
Mr. Kirby. Through your worship, that is correct, yes, it would emerge and there would be a motion table. Depending on the content of the motion, would depend to an extent on what was discussed in closed session.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I really don't want to go into closed session till I hear from our municipal lawyer. from our municipal lawyer, okay, outside municipal lawyer, because if I make a decision in there that affects the taxpayers of this community, I don't want the liability. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd be prepared to move a motion to adjourn until the meeting is called at the next...
Okay.
And hopefully it'll be at seven o'clock at night so that we can have the population of the city regularly attending.
Okay. Second, there? Counsel Spoh, second by Counsel Smith, do we adjourn? Any discussion? All those in favor? May I adjourn?